And welcome to the January 14th Council. Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Feschel.
Aye, here, sorry, thanks.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Muggerauer.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present six.
And Councilmember Feschel will lead us in the invocation this evening.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you Tanner Coralli and Patrick Jacoby. Did I get it right?
Hurlehe.
Hurlehe, thank you, from Trinity Lutheran School. And if you could just let us know what school you go to, what grade you're in, and what your favorite subject is.
I go to Trinity Lutheran School by Washington. I am in eighth grade and my favorite subject is art.
I go to Trinity Lutheran School, eighth grade, favorite subject is science.
Thank you so much for leading us this evening. Would you like to stay and hang out, or do you have something better to do?
I want to go home and sleep.
Need something to ask for later.
Next, we have our first opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have anyone registered to speak for consent agenda?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, is Ms. Snell back there? Is that, do I see her back there? I just have a quick question regarding the special events that are part of the consent agenda, if you don't mind. I apologize, I did not give you a heads up. Usually I try to, this is a simple one, you're going to be, you should be fine, I think. Later in the agenda, we're going to look at some different fees for the special events for 2020. And then, within all the special event package, the paperwork, you include all the costs that we roughly estimate to the organizers. Were those costs based upon 2019's numbers, or the potential or projected 2020?
So they're based on the 2019 with the expectation of, over the last couple of years, that we've increased the rates for the equipment charges. So it's based on the 2019, but with that change, should it go through for council? Based on previous approval of that process.
Okay, let me ask you a different way.
Sure.
While we gave them an estimate based upon the 2019 numbers, we've got, we're going to have some new 2020 numbers tonight. And when you invoice them, are they going to be based upon the current numbers as of today, or what you estimated them a couple of weeks or a couple of months ago?
They'll be at the current rates that you put in place today, moving forward, because the events would occur after that, and they've been notified of that and understand that. Once those are approved, they'll get new estimates.
Perfect, that's a good answer. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I'm struggling without my iPad today, I left it. But, so these new numbers that we're getting, how does this work if it's on the consent agenda? So we're not going to approve these on the consent agenda, we're going to have another kick at the cat to talk about these?
The rates themselves are a separate item on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
So you're just approving the permit, whatever you ultimately chooses your rates are applicable, as Ms. Snell said.
Okay, all right, and I apologize, I'm just a little disheveled right now.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
One more, just on Resolution 20-01, the purchase of ballistic production equipment. And I don't know if Mr. Miller wants to chime in too, but I wanted to say thank you to those in the community, those that are, those that helped get some donations and helped organize this very fast and very efficiently. There's some donation dollars that are backing this purchase, so the city's actually not making this purchase, but they're being funded by some very, very good community partners, and some people who organize that, and just wanted to reach out and just say thank you to those that were a part of that and who organized that, and it's a nice thing for the fire department to have that equipment, so.
Agreed. All right, on 20-2, approve agreement for disposal of contaminated soil. Mr. Davis, or maybe Mr. Rabby, would like to talk about, that's a pretty big ticket item, 4.76 million. Maybe just talk a little bit about the expense.
Yeah, and that is strictly an estimate at this point, based on what we think we're going to find during construction projects for the next few years. You know, in the case of dealing with our contaminated materials that we excavate from construction projects, the waste management landfills are the only place we can take that material. The Odegabe County landfill does not accept most of that material, so they are the only one that we can work with. As we have in the past, we have negotiated rates that are lower than their standard commercial tipping fee rate. The material that is generated, we go through a process prior to each construction year, where we do a records review of, to see what potential there is to encounter contaminated materials, and what types we might encounter. During our soil bowling process, we do sampling so that we can identify and get all the characteristics of the material, so that hopefully we don't have any surprises during construction and encounter something we weren't expecting. By getting that work done upfront, we save ourselves downtime during the construction project and keep it all moving. The funding for this, you know, we estimate and include that in all of our budgets for our capital projects.
So with that estimation, is there a list of projects, or is that just strictly straight out of the CIP? The ones or for?
This estimated amount is for the three-year term of the contract that we have with, that we're asking you to approve with waste management. So obviously, the 2020 projects are, you know, any capital project that's in this approved 2020 CIP, and the same would hold true for 21 and 22, any projects that are in the approved CIP, you know, would include funding for the potential of dealing with contaminated materials.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on consent agenda? Mary, can we please take a roll?
Feschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
All right, moving on to pending ordinances, ordinance 20-25, approve zone change from Central Mixed Use District to Central Mixed Use District with a planned development at 717 Oregon Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Can we please take the roll?
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
I was slow on the button, sorry about that.
That's okay, I was quick to.
Nope, you're, it was fine. I just wanted, for the record, and for my fellow council members, I just wanted to make it known, I do know the applicant, he is a distant family member of mine. Haven't talked to him regarding the project, but I did just want it known for the record, I will be participating in the, any discussion and vote, but I did want it known for the record that it's not an immediate family member, so I am allowed to participate.
Thank you. And can we please take the roll?
Feschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
It wasn't a lot of participation, Matt.
I tried, I tried.
So we have three new ordinances tonight, there would be no formal action taken on these items. First off is 20-26, approved parking regulations on Third Avenue and MacArthur Road. Traffic and Parking Advisory Board recommends approval. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
Okay, let's see here. Next is 2027, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay at 2116 Jackson Street and 313 Allen Avenue, tentatively 2120 Jackson Street. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
Right. Mr. Lyons, do you want to just maybe talk a little bit about what this is?
This is 2027.
2027, yes.
This is potential redevelopment of the two sites. Currently, it is the former bar site and the junkyard facility that's east of it. Applicant is proposing to remove the existing structure, also remove the junkyard from the facility, and construct a new auto parts store at that location. With some of the contamination and site constraints they have there, applicant is proposing to zone it to a planned development, so they can push the development as far west and away from the neighborhood, and minimize the development on the contaminated areas possible. So we're using the planned development to really shift that development over, give us a nice green space, and also hubcap the contaminated area.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I should have asked this sooner. Do you recall how much pervious space that green space will add back in that is not currently there?
Off the top of my head, I do not have that number.
It looks like about half, right?
It's pretty substantial, I don't have the site plan in here for us. Otherwise, I'm in the council packet, I know the site plan is on page, looks like it's listed as page 19. The green space is about 135 feet in width, so, you know, a residential lot, almost width of green space on the eastern side of the site. You know, area that right now is largely covered in gravel and junk, would all be removed and returned to green space.
It's almost 100% impervious, and they're going down to about 56, 59%.
Right, so more than our normal.
Maximum cold allotment for here would be 70%.
So that's exciting for me. A simple building, but removing a junkyard and some blight and adding green space.
Overall impact would really be positive for that area with removal of the relatively dated existing commercial structure, and then removal of the junkyard.
Okay, thank you. All right, and the final pending new ordinance, no action again, 2028, approve zone change from single-family to district to corporate business park district, planned development for property located at the north 1600 block of Oshkosh Avenue. Do we have anyone here registered for that item?
No one is registered.
All right. Very good, thank you. Moving on to new resolutions. Approve, 2029, approve specific implementation plan for a light manufacturing, retail, and educational facility at 717 Oregon Street. Plan Commission, approved. Do we have anyone registered on this item?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just same disclaimer as before, as we went from the ordinance to the resolution, I will be participating even though I'm, I do know the applicant.
So, Mr. Lyons, do you want to describe what this is going to be? It's kind of an interesting, unique feature for the South Side coming?
A very unique facility for not just Oshkosh, but Wisconsin in general. The proposed owner of the building is looking to have a educational and basically venom lab, they produce antivenom and anti-toxins from snakes and scorpions. The presently currently located outside of the city of Oshkosh, there's only approximately six of these in the entire United States that do this. They work in conjunction with the school district and the university on kind of their biology and chemistry programs, really helping push forward cancer research, as well as actual antivenom toxins that are used throughout the world to help save people when they're bitten by snakes and scorpions. It's a local individual that was born and raised here in Oshkosh and wants to bring his business back into the city. It's the old Castle Appliance Building, which is, you know, seen its current use gone away, they're looking to sell the building. He felt was a great opportunity to locate himself back into Oshkosh where he's originally from, and kind of have this unique partnership. He's already worked out some curriculum agreements with the University of Oshkosh and the Oshkosh School District, to really bring students in and help educate them, and hopefully get them passionate about this type of use.
It's a pretty unique proposal.
It's something we have not seen before. I've kind of talked to people in the past about this. When we talk about planned developments, this is a planned development. It's a use that when we wrote a zoning code, never thought of. We didn't think of venom lab as a use, but with the ways integrating displays and educational, I think it's the perfect use for a planned development here in Oshkosh.
Great, thanks for that explanation. All right, so any further discussion? No? Can we please call the roll?
Feschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Next is Resolution 20-30, approve tax increment district number 39. Project plan designate tax increment district number 39 boundaries. Create tax increment district number 39 Cabrini School redevelopment. Plan Commission approved. And do we have anyone registered to speak?
No, we do not.
Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
So we did have a little bit of discussion in the workshop previously, not specifically on this, but Mr. Davis, did you want to just give a summary?
Sure. This is the existing structure that housed the school, that's been vacant for several years now, and Mr. Dumke and his team are looking to use historic tax credits to renovate the facility, apply for low-income housing tax credits, and convert that school into senior affordable housing. Thirty-some units, and they've provided the site plan to Plan Commission and Council, and everything matches what we're envisioning for a TIF project in that district, as well as the redevelopment of that structure. All the input we've received at Plan Commission and Judiciary Board up to this point has been very supportive. We're hoping he gets his LIHTC award later this spring, and my expectation is we'll have a closed session on a development agreement after his LIHTC award, and bring the development agreement forward once that's been hammered out.
So we'll know more in April, right?
Yes, that's what I've been told.
Much-needed additional units for affordable senior living.
Yes, and historically.
Glad to see this come forward. Mr. Lyons.
Alan, we have a TIF score sheet we use for all the TIF districts. This project scored 98, which is the highest we've had to date for any TIF project.
Thank you. All right, back to, oh, can we please call the roll?
Feschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Next is Resolution 20-31, approve city manager 2019 performance evaluation, 2020 compensation. Normally, our deputy mayor would deliver this, however, he couldn't be with us this evening. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Crowsey to read the summary.
This is our council feedback. The city manager continues to work hard for the city and its citizens. He continues to remain focused on both details and the strategic plan for the city. 2019 was a challenging year for the city manager and staff. The change to monthly billing with our water bills, the loss of finance director, just as billings were going out, and the confusion by many citizens was slowly resolved, and the stages we were at with the budget. The hiring of Russ Van Gompel as finance director made it a smooth transition for the city and the citizens of Oshkosh. The council understands 2019 saw significant challenges with the budget and leverage restraints imposed on the city from the state budget. Yet with diligent work by Mr. Roloff, finance director Van Gompel, and staff, the city was able to approve a balanced budget, add four officers to the fire department, a management analyst for the fire department. We were also able to hire an IT help desk position, plus two more maintenance workers in the Parks Department. The city continues to work on improving its streets and sewer, storm sewer concerns, plus we have added several significant tips this past year to help further economic development in the city. The council understands there will be many challenges ahead. We are confident in the city manager's ability to continue to deal with these issues, working with staff to make some minor adjustments in the strategic plan and the city's website. The council has confidence in Mr. Roloff to continue to move the city of Oshkosh forward, and will continue to make Oshkosh competitive in northeast Wisconsin, and continue to make Oshkosh a great place to live, work, and play. The Oshkosh Common Council has approved a 3.57% pay raise retroactive to the first of the year for 2020, bringing the salary to 159.5. There will be no change to the city manager's benefit package. The city manager's contract will be retroactive to January 1st, 2020.
Thank you. And we'll bring resolution back for council, motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things, one, while he's not here this evening, Deputy Mayor Steve Herman, I just wanted to thank him for his diligent, professional work in the, one of the few roles that the deputy mayor has. I thought the process was very smooth, and it was easy for us to get through it in quick order, so I wanted to thank him for his hard work in leading us through that process. And then just wanted to thank city manager Roloff for your leadership this last year, and as well as over the last, your 10-year here, but personally, I think you're doing a fantastic job leading the city, and I'm glad you're at the helm. So thanks for sticking around for at least another year, right?
Councilmember Allison Osby.
I was just going to second what councilmember Muggerauer said.
And I believe that.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Herman, who's absent, and I appreciate all the confidence and happy to continue working with you in moving the city forward, and got a great staff to work with.
Thank you very much. So we will take the roll.
Feschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Next, we have Resolution 20-32, approve charges for extraordinary services for special events for 2020. Do we have anyone registered here to speak on that item?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Miller.
Are these, Russ, you want to come up here so I can flog you a little bit? So, so these are the proposed new fees for special events, is that accurate?
Yes.
So, I've got a real problem with this. The one thing citizens and businesses want are consistency in what government does. And it seems like we hop around with these things, with these fees and everything, and especially these special events coordinators and people, they need some consistency out of us. So, you know, didn't we raise these things two or three years ago, and now you're talking about lowering some, raising some others? I mean, I'll give you a little time to explain, but I want you to understand my frustration. It's not fair to these special event coordinators and these people that are bringing special events forward here, to not know what their costs are going to be long-term. So that's, that's my gripe with this right now. Fair enough?
Yeah, I understand that, and I take those comments very seriously, and I think all of staff does when they work with special events that are occurring within our city. In 2019, when city council considered special event charges, we were following a pattern of what has been done in the past. One of the things that came to my attention, and I was asked to take a look at it as the new finance director, is how are we allocating our cost out for special events? Because we want to be fair to the special event itself, and we want to be fair to the other taxpayers within our city for when the city resources are being used. Just to follow up real quickly, there's basically two components. We're looking at an equipment charge or reimbursement, and the city's policy is not changing on that. That's a certain percentage of what we would bill out for FEMA rates. And I understand that when that was implemented, there was a lot of discussion about it. In 2019, the FEMA reimbursement rate was about 50%, was at 50% of the FEMA rates, and we were doing a slowly escalating that into play. For 2020, that estimate would be at 75%, so we're doing a gradual increase. The change that I'm presenting to you this evening is on the labor rates. We've gotten a lot of feedback about the labor rates and how we allocate and charge back the labor rates. In the past, the city has really used what's called a fully loaded labor rate, and in looking at that, and looking at my past experience, there are some direct costs that are associated in addition to the labor rate itself. The other benefits that float along with that, like Social Security, Medicare, WRS, are all based on the labor and where the labor's occurring. But there's also, what I would say is, other benefit costs that are not directly attributed during that hourly rate. Those are costs that the city would bear whether an employee was working on Project A, or Project B, or a special event. And some of those are like health insurance, life insurance, workers' comp, and unemployment benefits. So those charges are occurring whether or not an employee's at a special event or not. What I did was, I looked at those rates. My recommendation to city councils that we continue to pass along those direct costs. Social Security is based on your hourly rate, it's based on the hours worked, WRS is the same thing, but some of these other, what I would say, non-direct costs, I think we could better present that in kind of a rounded percentage, and that's what the recommendation is for 2020, is that for protective employees, because some of those costs for retirement and those type of things are higher, that that would be adjusted by 30%. And for non-protective service employees, that would be adjusted by 25%. So I understand this is a change, but I think in looking at what's fair to the taxpayer and what's fair to the special events, I think this is a good way of doing it. My intention is to follow a similar pattern moving forward. It's just a decision point that you need to make, of whether that's fair to the taxpayers for reimbursement, and whether it's fair for people holding special events. I also like to just note that events related to like block parties, we typically don't charge those out because there's a benefit assigned to that, so these would just be those major events that are occurring within our community.
Yeah, I guess, how do I do this, Lynn, if I want to make a motion to amend this? Is now the time to do this? Okay.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
So I guess my question is, is, you know, if we were to take and say that we have the same exact events in 2019 as we have in 2020, all things being equal, what kind of a real increase does that equate to?
And in my fiscal analysis, it's kind of hard to give you that this evening. A lot of this depends on the personnel assigned to the event, and each event's a little bit different on who gets assigned and how often they're, or how long they're assigned. So it's really hard to give you that number this evening, but in addition to the memo that I provide at council, you also have copies of the proposed changes. I show what would have happened if we were to continue. I show what would have happened if we were to have continued with the old method of allocation versus what's being recommended as a proposed new way of allocating those costs. So you can kinda see by position where that would impact.
But that's, you know, like when I, when I look at them kind of line item by line item, you know, it looks in the proposed, not the old method, but the proposed, to me, it looked as if they dropped.
Yeah. And that's because, again, the cost, those non-direct costs of employee benefits are not individually assigned, it's not loaded into that individual rate. We took the hourly rate, that's part of our collective bargaining agreements and the wage scale, and then we added 30% for protective employees and 25% for non-protective employees.
Because I guess that's what I'm getting at is, because when I look at this, I'm like, well, okay, at the end of the day, is it, are they really gonna experience an increase? So that's, that's why I was asking, like, not that there's any variables, but let's just say we pick an event like, you know, whether it's EAA or, you know, in a downtown event and it's, everything's the same, you know, whether somebody was on overtime, somebody wasn't on overtime, whatever the case may be. With what you're proposing, is it flat? Is it 2%? Is it 1%? Is it 10%?
Yeah, I don't know if I, I'm comfortable giving you a blanket percentage like that. But I will say that you also have to consider that the equipment rentals is also going up by another, that the discount on the equipment rental is only 25%. Last year was 50%. So some of the reduction on the labor side's gonna be made up by getting closer to our truer costs on our equipment rate.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. I guess, Russ, what I'm looking for is just consistency here. I don't want us, I don't want us this year saying we're gonna drop your rate 1.7% next year, we're gonna come back and say it's 3.7% higher. What I'm, I guess what I'm gonna propose, and before I propose it, I wanna talk to you about it, is just a three-year freeze for these special event groups on the current, on the current rates, the way they are. So these people have some budget numbers, they know what they're planning. I just, these people are important to us and I think they deserve that out of this government, that we give them consistency. And I don't wanna be the one knocking on the door saying, hey, I'm raising it 3.5% after they budgeted for it already. So, so do you see a problem in just going with the old rates for three years and taking a look at it then?
Yeah, I guess that's one option. The option I was looking at is, you know, again, looking at a methodology going forward of what I was comfortable with and what I've been kinda experienced in doing in other situations in other communities. My intention would be to stick with that 30 and 25% unless WRS rates change going forward and the only increase would be based on the hourly rates that get adjusted. Because, you know, if you freeze the rates in, at 2019 levels, we all know that we're looking at potential adjustments based on cost of living going forward. So I think you wanna keep that flexibility, but that margin, that tack on should stay at 30%, 25% unless social security or WRS changes and we'll have to take a look at that, that adjustment from there.
Fitz, are you answer, answer, you wanna come talk?
Well, I'm gonna give Mr. Mookerauer a chance.
Oh, sorry. Oh, no.
Okay. Councilmember Mookerauer.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Miller, to defer a little bit. You can come back in a second. So as somebody who, who definitely is not a fan of our special events policy, I'm thankful that our new finance director did take this, this project under, under consideration and looked at these rates and did get closer to what he felt was a truer labor rate that we're charging our special events. That was one of my sticking points and I, I think I can remember the EAA representative sitting up here railing against this council before I got on in regards to the true and accurate costs that we were attempting to convey to the special event organizers. So I'm thankful that, I mean, looking at some of these rates for, by and large, you know, police, fire, and park service, they're the ones that we're billing out. And straight time, double time, time and a half, the rates are gonna be lower. So these special events should, at least in 2020, see a reduction in terms of labor rates. I'm still not a fan of our equipment rates that we're charging, because you used a term about our true costs. They're not our true costs, they're, it's a federal estimate of costs. But I'm thankful that the labor rates are lower going forward, potentially. So, so I wanna thank you for, for taking that work and bringing back a better number. It's not a great number in terms of the events themselves, but it is a true number or closer to true number of what we should be charging them.
If I could respond?
Absolutely.
Just a couple of comments on that. First of all, the percentages is something that I've been used to doing in other organizations and communities and it was not done in a vacuum. I involved the police department, fire department, the parks department, special events coordinator, and we looked at it and we had some very strong internal discussions and there was nothing wrong with the methodology that was used in the past. Because those aren't really costs, but you sit back and I need to ask city council, you know, that opportunity, I mean, if we assign a parks worker or a police officer or firefighter to a special event, you know, is it fair that that special event pick up some of those costs that are really a benefit cost whether they're working on project A or project B? Secondly, on the, the equipment rental rates, that's pretty much in kinda industry standard to use FEMA as reimbursement. If we were involved in an emergency situation, that's the amount of money we would expect to get reimbursed from FEMA. And if we start discounting that over a longer period of time, we may in fact be in a situation where we might not be able to recover that from FEMA during a natural disaster or another disaster. So we wanna kinda hold tight to that. But, you know, these, these things were all well thought out and come forward with, with my recommendation to you this evening.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick, you look like you'd like to add something.
Yeah, I think that Russ touched on all the things that I was gonna add. The only other thing that I would add to his additional explanation is sometimes WRS rates go down too. And I think that the thought process, as Russ indicated, was to try to, there wasn't anything wrong with the previous rates, but to try to charge the organizers from a labor perspective, things that were not, that were ordinary direct charges, to put it in more financial terms. So I think that was a thought process from Russ. And I hear what councilmember Miller is saying. I understand he wants to have the consistency. One of the thoughts when we came up with the equipment rate was to try to bump it up over time so folks could plan ahead. So that was the thought process in terms of why that was changing and I didn't know if councilmember Miller knew that because he wasn't on the council at the time. So we were conscious of trying to minimize the impact on the organizers, but this was all designed to try to come up with something that we thought was more fair and more accurate. That was really the impetus for this.
I certainly appreciate, you know, that more comprehensive look or at least the methodology review. Mr. Miller, I just wanna see if I understand what you were proposing earlier. So are you against the rates being decreased?
Yes, I am, because I think it's gonna be short-lived. I think we're gonna jockey around. What I'd like to see is some more consistency for these event planners. I mean, this, this reduction is not significant and I'm sure it's short-lived. And I've listened to fire and police talk for years about how these events are a drain on us, this, that, we need more money and things. So I expect that in the near future, we're gonna have to go back to the same people that we raised the rates two years ago, lowered them this year, and then next year, raise them again. What I'm proposing is that we freeze the 2019 rates, if everybody's uncomfortable with three years, for an additional two years and, and just move beyond this, this special events fee conversation for two years and give everybody a little bit of sanity.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Looking at the rate tables, I mean, you can clearly see it's a reduction and I think event planners are gonna be pleasantly surprised because everybody's used to things going up, not going down. If we freeze it for three years, obviously wages go up, everything goes up. So I think we wanna make sure we can at least cover ourselves as a city in costs structure. So, I mean, I would be opposed for having any kind of a freeze. And if we look at it, we had a reduction this year. If it goes up next year, it might only be at the 2019 levels. So it was really a two-year freeze compared to last year's levels if you look at it that way.
Councilmember Pashal.
Sure. Mr. Van Gompo. If there was a freeze that was put into place, how would you go about taking, addressing any future changes to this? Would you do anything different than what you did this year?
No, I kinda believe in the methodology that I've used in the past and that I'm recommending this evening. Again, it's, you know, it's maybe a methodology that has strong merit, but at the same time provides, I believe, some fair ask for reimbursement from the special events. So based on my experience right now, that, I would come back with something similar to what I'm proposing this evening.
Follow-up to that is, what, if we, if we were to do a phrase, a freeze, what, other than, is there any other factors in what you've already described that, that could have a greater economic impact to the, to the city in regards to, to going along with a freeze?
I can't think of any right now.
Okay, so, so do you, you know, I know you're hesitant to answer percentages, but I'll put it out there anyway. So, in, in regards to, would there be...
Bless you.
Sorry. I got confused, I lost my question. So, that's okay. So I actually like to make, I'd like to make a motion to amend it. So, and I want you to be able to respond to it, so hopefully we allow you to do this. I actually would like to, the motion that I would like to put out there is that we go forward with the 2020 rates as is, but freeze that at two years. So that would be my, that would be my, my motion on the table.
Before, there's a second. Can I ask a point of clarification on that? You say the 2020 current, do you mean as of right now or the proposed 2020?
The proposed 2020.
Appreciate it, just wanna make sure.
Thank you for the clarification.
City attorney.
Just so the council is aware, the municipal code does say you will adopt an ordinance each year.
Okay.
So...
That, I don't disagree with, but we can still adopt those same rates every year too.
You could adopt them each year, but to...
To say that we're gonna put a freeze on it.
Yeah, to put a freeze on, you'd be trying to over, have a resolution supersede an ordinance. So you can say that's your intention to do, but we would have to bring it back in a different...
Well, then...
...in manner, just so, you know, it does say each year you will adopt the ordinance.
It's moot then.
Or resolution, sorry.
Every council would be voting on the fees every year, so it'd be a different council every year.
And we would still be bringing back the FEMA rates. So we would...
Unless we bring back in ordinance change.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
I'm, yeah, there's no reason. If we cannot put a freeze by, by law, by what we've passed...
You would have to change the ordinance.
The ordinance. I will withdraw my motion.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. Which this might be now, this question irrelevant if, if Mr. Pashal's withdrawing his motion. When are the next round of police, fire, and transit negotiations? Which obviously impacts wages and all areas of compensation.
Right, all those collective bargaining agreements expire this year?
That's...
At the end of this year. So we will be undertaking collective bargaining probably in the middle of the year we begin.
Right, so I mean, at this point, we have no idea in whether that's a two-year agreement, three-year agreement. We don't know what the increases are or if it's gonna be, may, or remain stable. We don't know that. So I think to try to predict anything beyond 2020, I think would be inappropriate at this time.
And I guess I would add, you know, I know city attorney Lawrence and talked about the, the idea of approval every year. That was, I think, designed with the intent not to hamstring council, but to give you flexibility. That, that was the purpose of that. I know, based on the dialogue and the ideas that are coming forward, it may not seem that way, but, but for that very eventuality that councilmember Allison Osby talked about, that things change and you need to evaluate everything and then we can give you the best information possible for you to make a decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Lynn, Mark, I just wanna make sure I understand this. We can, we can freeze, we could, we could...
You could freeze this year.
Right.
It, the ordinance just says the common council shall approve by resolution each year a list of fees and charges. So with, that was the caution that by making a motion for multiple years, it wasn't consistent with what the ordinance required.
Your motion that you wanna do, you could still do if you want to remain at 2019.
Yes. Okay. And then, can we...
Just that you can't take action and then skip a year.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but I guess, I guess the message we would want to send to the future councils is let's, let's keep some consistency here. I mean, whether I'm here or not, but, so in that case, I guess I would like to make a motion to amend this and actually keep the 2019 rates for the 2020 calendar year.
Do you mean the labor rates?
The entire rate list or just the labor rates? Because there's more than labor rates.
But was there, on the FEMA rates and the other things on the equipment rates, what was the intention? Was there, I thought there was some type of escalation there. Is it, you wanna talk about that a little bit before we, before I chop this to pieces?
Sure. Just to refresh everybody's memory, for 2019, we were charging special events 50% of the FEMA rates.
Okay.
For 2020, the proposed chart includes that'd be, that, that would be increased to 75%. So there'd be a, like a 25% discount. So that was the proposed rate fee structure that you have with the memo. And that was consistent with the thought process from other years.
If I can to, the FEMA rates actually increased, which might be why you see a slightly different number there.
Okay.
Based on that, the FEMA rate increased, I think, back in August, when we had adopted the FEMA rates as of January 1, when they changed. Now we have to adopt them this year with the new rates and that's why you see a little slight increase in what you, what's listed in that column, plus the percentage that will be increasing.
So, so the rates, the rates are increasing a little bit, but the discount is also increasing. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. So, and Matt, are you, are you following me here? So?
Following right along, are you following along?
But I wanna make sure that, I just wanted some clarification there because of your comments on the, the equipment rate. So, so I propose using the new FEMA schedule and freezing the labor rates for 2019.
So basically, you're, you're saying you wanna vote against this resolution? You're not proposing an amendment?
An amendment to the resolution, yeah.
Councilmember Crowsey.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we don't have a second.
There's not, there isn't a second.
Is there a second? Died for lack of a second.
There you go.
Right, Councilmember Crowsey.
I was just gonna mention, you said, Mr. Miller, you don't have your tablet in front of you. The 2019 and 2020 proposed fees and the labor rates, they go down in 2020. So I mean, you're saving event planners money by adopting...
Again, though, somebody couldn't tell me how much they went down as a percentage. So that's...
Yeah, but going down is going down. I mean, we wanna save the event planners money at the same time as making sure we're covered too, as a city.
I'm looking for consistency. So if we're gonna...
So, Councilmember Pashal, we're gonna let that rest for a minute. Councilmember Pashal.
Sure. I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is the fact that we have to come back and approve this every year creates a challenge for those that are using our community because what I think you're saying is that, is that it's almost too consistent sometimes that they, that those rates, you know, either come or go based on analysis that you do, which I'm not disagreeing with your analysis here. And I, and I think, I think that comes back to our original reason why we couldn't, why we can't put... And I, and I think, I think that comes back to our original reason why we couldn't, why we can't put a freeze on it, is that it's based in the ordinance to review this and to come back to it and present it to, you know, to the council every year. And I really think that if we, if we want to create something along those lines of what you're suggesting, we really want to look further at the ordinance. That might actually create more support for community organizers in maybe creating a certain rate or level that's, that's set in place for a certain amount of years and then reviewing it after that. I think, I, you know, I think I may be the only person, Ms. Allison Osby may have been on the council at the time that we, that we did this. But I know that was really the intention at the time, that it was really important that this fee schedule came back to the council every year to be, to be looked at, particularly for the reason of what you're suggesting, is so that the council had some oversight over whether those fees increased or decreased or, or went too high and stuff like that. So, so that's just my, my general comments.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, and, you know, I do know that special event fees, certainly we've had a lot of community feedback in the past. I can honestly say that I have not received a phone call nor an email in regards to this, which usually we would hear from event organizers as well as those from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I think in this particular instance, you know, I, I do like what our finance director did. I think also too, based on his experience and the communities that he's been involved in, I'm going to leave this up to him as I trust his judgment in how these are laid out. And so therefore, I will be supporting this resolution as is.
Any further discussion? Can we please take the roll?
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie, 5-1.
Next we have Resolution 20-33, oppose SB 560 legislation that would limit the ability of cities to exercise discretion in creating and managing tax increment financing districts. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess before I give my comment, Mr. Roloff, do you maybe want to discuss this or at least let the public know why we're, we're telling Madison to knock it off on this particular issue?
Yeah, well, this, we, just before the holidays, we were informed by the League of Municipalities that was actually a public hearing that was going to take place last week, which was subsequently postponed. And I'm not sure why it was postponed, the mayor and I had chatted about that. And we don't know when it's going to be rescheduled. But the proposal was to limit the maximum amount that you could use as direct grants to TIF districts to 20% of our costs with the TIF. Right now, our policy provides for up to 75% in some cases and 90% in other cases. And in reality, council's even gone beyond that, beyond their own policy and gone into the 90% range. So this would completely undo what council's been doing in recent years. The reason the percentage is so high is because in the past with traditional tax increment districts, the city would incur costs and pay those back versus the developer not assuming that risk. Now with the pay-as-you-go districts, essentially the developers are taking virtually all the risk associated with it. So our percentage of grants has risen much greater than, than the 20%. This is being proposed by Senator Dewey Strobel from the Saukville area, and there aren't a lot of redevelopment TIFs in those areas. So there may be an industrial park, which involves a lot of infrastructure, which are costs that we normally incur. But for us to go to a pay-as-you-go, we're essentially shifting the risk to the developer, which requires us to borrow less, which, when the market takes a dip, the developer is the one who, who may not reap the benefits of that TIF district. So what we're doing is we're, we're actually shifting the risk away. This would essentially say, well, you can't do those. We would probably revert ourselves to not doing pay-go TIFs anymore. Again, the shift would switch back to us, and I think that's our primary concern. There are other elements in there that I can't say I necessarily disagree with because from an experience basis, there are some requirements that they want unanimous consent of the Board of Review, or, excuse me, the Joint Review Board. I can't remember a single vote that hasn't gone 5-0.
Not in Oshkosh.
But at the same time, I'm concerned that, you know, if there's a genuine disagreement, one person and the next, you could have one person essentially holding a veto over the whole thing. So I do have concerns about that, even though that's not the major concern. The major concern with, with SB 560 is the, is the limitation, wouldn't you say so, Alan?
Yes, shifting the risk back to the city is what I think he, that we need to be concerned about. And we're trying to shift the risk away from the city for the last 10 years.
And I know Senator Strobel is not a big fan of TIF districts in general, but I would suspect that in, in Ozaki County, you don't have the same experience that you have in an older city with redevelopment. I mean, we just talked about a few TIFs earlier tonight, and the wild card with all those districts in these redevelopment areas is contaminated soil and what that means. We've shifted the risk, which is good for us. And if they incur those costs and we repay them through their tax increment, then that's, that's a good thing for us. So that's, so I felt it was consistent with our TIF policy and also concerned about the taking away of local control.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Hold up, I asked them to make their comment before I, before I made the, if you don't mind. No, no, that's okay, thank you. You know, I did have an issue with, with a couple parts too, and the unanimous consent, unanimous approval was, was definitely a sticking point. And you used it right, they had, one potential member could have a veto over this council, and that doesn't work for me in terms of, the locally elected officials are the ones that are supposed to be making this call, not necessarily those on the joint, you know, just the joint review board. City of Oshkosh should be making this call, the ones that are elected in this community to, to make that call. Now, I jokingly asked City Manager Roloff to, to talk about the topic in regards to Madison keeping their nose out of local business, and it was, it was jokingly, but it's also in seriousness too, because there are plenty of issues at the state level that, that our state representatives can spend some time on. And it'd be nice if they did that instead of continuously poking their fingers and getting nosy in the local, the locals' business. Those that are elected locally know what their community needs best. And our state representatives, we should keep their nose out of that particular, that particular henhouse and, and work on their own work. I understand they have some oversight and they set statute, but we know what's best for Oshkosh. Appleton knows what's best for them, and so on and so forth. So let us govern those who have chosen to represent, chosen who've, you know, chosen to, chosen to lead this community. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
I don't know, after Mr. Roloff and Mr. Muggerauer, to be honest, I'm going to save my energy and they pretty much said everything I had to say.
Well, I, I guess I have a little bit different perspective on this. While I'm very interested in us preserving our ability to reduce risk because we do a significantly high number of tax incremental finance districts, I, I'm more in support of the unanimous piece of that for the JRB because each of those entities has a responsibility to their taxpayers in that regard. And so the requirement for the unanimous consent, I think we had a little technical question about whether or not that would be unanimous by those present or those who would, could be present. I don't think there's enough information in the way we have our resolution worded that this eliminates ongoing collaboration that participate in creating TIF districts. I find a little bit objectionable. And the 20% piece maybe is significant reduction in what our policy has allowed, but we haven't practiced our, all of our TIF policy to the T for a period of, well, ever since it was created. So I, I'm not able to support this resolution in the way it is. And that's my, my piece on that. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some clarification, I think we do do a lot of TIFs here in Oshkosh, but the size of them is significantly smaller. So as a percentage, I think we're well below the average, aren't we? I mean.
Our, we are over $100 million away from our cap, and there's a lot of communities that do a few districts, but they're mega districts. They TIF almost half the city, and that way they can keep a few districts, but they do a lot of different development agreements, and they bump up, if not exceed, the 12% cap. We're nowhere near that. We've been very judicious in how we're using our, our TIF districts.
So I really enjoy the fact that we're doing a lot of TIFs and just smaller and more targeted. So I, I think we're doing an excellent job, and, and I couldn't agree more. Keep Madison's nose out of this, you know, those knuckleheads, we don't need them snooping around here, so. I can support this.
However, we, we do, while we do have home rule, it is already statutorily governed. It's a question to, you know, those amounts. And so I guess I'm looking at it from a little bit different perspective. Not that I am anti-TIF or wanting to withdraw that, but when you talk about, we do a larger number of smaller TIFs. There are a significant number of smaller businesses who would also like to have, you know, some of those opportunities that, that the big fish have. So I, I think that I respect my fellow council members' view on this, but I, I still can't get there on supporting this. And I'm also a little bit uncomfortable with the assumption that we would all agree to object to this particular legislation, so. Any further discussion? Can we please take the roll?
Paschal.
No.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Muggerauer.
Aye.
Crowsey.
No.
Paul Mary.
No.
Lost 3-3.
All right, next we have council discussion and direction to City Manager, future agenda items, future workshop, joint workshop with Council Plan Commission, Redevelopment Authority, Rental Housing Advisory Board regarding the analysis of impediments to fair housing plan and CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant, 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan. We have this scheduled for January 28th at 5:00 PM in room 404. Mr. Davis, would you like to maybe describe a little more about what that is and how the public can participate?
Yes, at this point in time, the city's retained a consulting firm to help us put together these plans. They've done a lot of research, they've done a lot of interviews, we've done surveys, focus groups. They're preparing a draft report that they'll be able to present and talk about. And I'm expecting they'll want quite a bit of reaction from the invited groups as well as the public. And they've set up some formats for the response once the, the draft is ready for public review. So this is the first opportunity for, say, the study group to look at it. And then once it's beyond that point, we'll take that out to the public and they'll have another month or so to comment on both, both the plan and the impediments to, to fair housing.
And could you remind us too, who the consulting group is and how much we paid them for this plan? I, I don't recall.
Urban Design Ventures out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I want to say it's $25,000. Just off the top of my head, I'd have to double check that.
I had someone ask me that recently, and I could not recall the name either, so. Rather than digging back through, I put it on you, thank you. Everybody okay with the January 28th at 5:00 PM? All right, and then we have a workshop on website changes, date to be determined. I am assuming you're looking for dates from us, or?
Yeah, pretty much, I think this is, you know, we had discussed this previously. I know there were some issues, a lot of it had to do with emails. This would be more of a, you know, come as you are type of thing if you're, if you have any specific concerns. But we thought the best way to do that was set up some computers and just give you the opportunity to identify concerns that you have, so we can take those comments directly from you. So we could set it up here at 5:00 o'clock, and, you know, if you, if you show up at 5:30, that's okay. And we just, we're just here, and then you could spend as little or as much time as you'd like to with staff to go over some, some issues or concerns you have. And then we could take those, that information and then come back to council and say, here's what we heard. But we, we felt it would be better if it was some one-on-one because you've all heard different people give you different comments about our website, and we just want to hear from you directly about what some of those things might be. The, obviously, the 28th would not be a good date because we already have that workshop. There's February 11th and February 25th. Go EDC would like to do an annual report. And then I believe we're looking at perhaps another one for the police facility study. So we've got a few, a few in the pipeline that are coming up that, but whenever you'd like to do this, we can certainly schedule again.
So do we want to schedule that now, or do we want to get a doodle poll from Diane, perhaps, the administrative assistant?
I could have Diane just pull the council, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good, and then I mentioned the, I just, police facility study is not done completely. I would like to have council take a look at it before, long before that, because there'll be a lot of questions. And we certainly want to do that, and Mr. Davis indicated Mr. White from Go EDC would like to come and give a little presentation to council as well. So those are kind of the upcoming workshops.
All right, next we have citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered for the second opportunity for citizen statements to council?
No one is registered.
All right, and council member announcements, statements, if anyone have anything new? Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Russ, you got a, you got a second to come up here? Mark, this is my, I didn't see it on your comments, but I was just curious.
I've got announcements and statements later on, but it's probably in that year balance?
Yeah, I'm looking, am I jumping ahead, you want me to skip it?
Yeah, I was going to bring it up toward, at the end.
All right, sorry.
All right then, City Manager, announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your agenda packet is the outstanding issues. You'd asked me this morning, just to point it out, I should have, the strategic plan fourth quarter report will be on next council agenda, so hopefully that will take care of that. Happy to answer any questions you might have regarding anything else in there. The Oshkosh Bridge closure, as Mr. Robbie makes his way up, there is actually a pre-construction workshop scheduled for the day of your strategic planning workshop. So Mr. Robbie will be sending a representative during that time, so we'll find out. But obviously, if they're not in pre-construction workshop till January 29th, the project's not going to be starting. It's, it's still open, yeah.
Latest communication that we've gotten from the Department of Transportation is the contractor is planning to close the bridge mid to late February. Their contractual completion dates have not changed however, so they have to get any work complete that impacts navigation done. I believe that it was like the second week in April, and the final completion of the project is mid-June. I don't remember the exact dates off the top of my head. If the contractor misses either of those dates, they will be subject to liquidated damages. So the end dates haven't changed, but the contractor's not planning to start until mid to late February.
All right.
And we'll keep you posted. There is a memo in your packet regarding parts of our 2020 computer order from Information Technology Division. That doesn't include the, some of you were due for your replacement tablets, and those were there in your, at your spot tonight. If you need any assistance with those, don't hesitate to contact Mr. Newman, and he'll, he'll assist you with that. Strategic planning, we had two half-day workshops last week with our supervisors, got some great input, and we'll be ready to, we'll be ready for your January 29th all-day workshop.
great input, and we'll be ready to, we'll be ready for your January 29 all-day workshop. We were made aware that Oshkosh Corporation is making an area in their global headquarters available to community groups at no cost. We took advantage of that, and they've offered that to us, and so we're going to have it there. A little, we explained to them that this is a public meeting, and we have to allow everybody in, and they'll work with us to make the accommodations so that the public can get into that area. We'll have a, for lack of a better term, a gallery set up so that anybody who may show up can, can observe the council in action during strategic planning. So we're very, you know, pleased that we're able to do that. There's a value to off-site. We've had it off-site before, but normally it's been on, off-site on public property. This is off-site on private property, but we're pleased that they're able to offer that to us. The supervisors, again, the, there's some great input. You know, typically, the supervisors have a little more of an internal focus. Some of the comments you'll see will probably reflect that. Certainly, public buildings are something that are, are an issue, and we've had that mentioned in our strategic plan, and that's why the council's had all these facility study done. So I think there's, those were some good comments. And some other interesting comments as well in terms of how to be progressive on certain things in the future. Diversity and inclusion was mentioned at staff, and it was encouraging to hear that because of the initiatives that HR is doing to do some internal training. So very encouraged by that as well. But I don't want to tease you too much, so look forward to having you there. We'll have breakfast available before 8:00. We'll probably get started around 8:30. That's all I have. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller. Year-end balances, the council during the budget work session had identified some uses that they would like to potentially use, depending on how the fund balance turned out, wanted to wait till year end. Mr. Van Gompo's still working on those, but we've given departments till the end of January to get everything done. So we're really not going to have the numbers ready till February. Some of the uses have to do with facilities, and we're still trying to get some numbers. So I'm anticipating that we'll have that for you on the February 25 meeting. I'd like to say the 11th, but I think they're going to still be crunching numbers. And I talked to Mr. Urban today regarding the facility costs for one of our projects, and we want to make sure that those numbers are more solid. And there's a few more things we need to work out. So we want to make sure that when we bring it to you, we'll probably have a fairly good feel by the 11th on where we are fund balance-wise, but the use of it, we want to give you a solid number that, that you're comfortable with. And so that's going to include some parks building, museum, some public safety building costs, as well as diversity and inclusion training. Those are the ones identified by council during, during budget workshop. So we'll have that for you on February 25.
And just kind of going back to the strategic planning, I think council had asked for the update on the final quarter for 2019, the fourth quarter 2019 strategic plan. Before we go into strategic planning, just wanted to mention to council, Mr. Roloff and I talked about that, and he's promised to get that to us before we go into that session.
You'll have it in, well, the council meeting is the day before strategic planning, so we're going to have it in your packet on that Friday before the council meeting. So you'll have that, and then you can bring it all into strategic planning on the 29th.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.